Change chair.
I'll give the speech, it should be like, you won't even be able to sit.
The one right next to you.
This one?
Yeah. We do a difference in height.
Oh, my God.
Council agenda, Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, regular Township Council meeting of April 17th, 2018.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building and on the municipal website on December 20th, 2017, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star Ledger on December 27th, 2017, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers on December 20th, 2017. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on public access, Channel 21, at 7:00 p.m. on Sundays and Wednesdays, and are also made available for viewing at www.parsippany.net.
Please rise for the flag salute. Ms. Peterson, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Mrs. Cragnanny.
Present.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Also in attendance are Business Administrator Ellen Sandman, Township Attorney Diane Hickey, Mayor Soriano, and myself, Leslie Miller.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, May 1st, 2018, at 7:30 p.m., Agenda Meeting; and May 15th, 2018, 7:30 p.m., Regular Meeting. Approval of minutes, Agenda Meeting, February 6th, 2018; Regular Meeting, February 20th, 2018; Agenda Meeting, March 13th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second, Graniani.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mrs. Cragnanny.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, at this time we'll have some presentations. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. You know what? I don't need this thing. At this time, I'd like to call up with me Bob and Connie Keller.
Mayor, Mayor, excuse me, but we need the microphone because of the recording.
Good point.
Is there another one?
Yeah. It's not.
It was on.
Give it a hit.
It doesn't seem like it's on.
Nope, it was let up.
It was let up.
It was let up.
Is there another one?
Just tap it for a few minutes, it'll work. It was working.
Tap, 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 tap.
There you go. Okay. Okay, I would like to call up Bob and Connie Keller to stand with me as I do this, please. You may have noticed when you were outside, when you were outside, that some of the trees have green ribbons around them. I'm going to explain that green ribbon to you right now.
Columns on the building.
Oh, and the columns, too. We have columns? My goodness. Okay. A proclamation. Whereas realizing the urgent need for organ and tissue donors across the country, the National Donate Life Month observance promotes a greater understanding about the life-saving benefits of donation and transplantation. Moreover, the need is increasing. New Jersey Sharing Network is committed to addressing that need through increased awareness and whereas the transplantation of organs and tissue is a miracle of modern medicine made possible through the compassion of organ and tissue donors, enabling surgeons to save thousands of lives every year. One organ donor can save eight lives and one tissue donor can restore health to over 75 others. People of all ages, ethnic backgrounds, and religions are touched by donation and by the serious shortage of organ donors that exists. Currently, there are nearly 4,000 New Jersey residents and 115,000 Americans awaiting life-saving transplant operations. And whereas, every capable person should support this vital effort by registering as an organ and tissue donor, making their family aware of their wishes, and being willing to give the precious gift of health, sight, and life to people in need. And whereas, registering as an organ donor and tissue donor signifies our fundamental human responsibility to help others and as an opportunity to join New Jersey Sharing Network in its life-saving mission. Now, therefore, I, Michael A. Soriano, Mayor of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, to hereby proclaim April as Donate Life Month and urge all residents to join me in promoting organ and tissue donor education throughout National Donate Life Month. The green ribbons signify that? You want to?
I don't know your question.
No, no, that's good. Come on up. Now, one of the reasons I have Bob and Connie here, Bob and Connie are two of the first people I met when I first moved to Parsippany about 16 years ago, and the story that I heard about them is that Connie donated her kidney to her husband, Bob, so that he can live on. I don't think I could get my wife to do that. But...
I didn't make her, I knew we were mad.
Okay, that's it, that's it. So, that was a good choice. But I would like to promote this to the Sharing Network.
If you wouldn't mind, you have a photo, maybe we could go on this side.
Sure. Okay. Last there. You might also mention, Mayor, that Kathy's father is a recipient.
That's right.
Twenty-two years ago, a heart transplant, a transplant.
How's he doing, by the way?
He's doing very well.
Okay.
He said hello to everybody. And from our local transplant group and the New Jersey Sharing Network, something for the mayor.
Thank you.
I apologize, I just...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
The color is very hard to accessorize.
Thank you.
But the idea behind it is it stimulates conversation.
Thank you, Jim.
Because the families have to know that you would like to be an organ donor.
Oh, I have.
Michael said you could save so many lives. Why take them to have your organs to have them with you having those we need to hear?
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Council President, thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, Mayor, we have a presentation from ADP.
Okay, it works. My name is David White, Division Vice President at ADP, Global Business Solutions in Roseland, New Jersey. This is probably my fifth year being here. Some of you probably recognize me from previous years. At ADP, one of our core values is giving back to the communities that we work and live. ADP has significant presence in northern New Jersey. We actually have four campuses within 10 miles of each other, two right here in Parsippany. When I look at all four campuses, we have approximately 150 associates that actually live right here in Parsippany. Additionally, at ADP, we give every associate one hour that they can, you know, do whatever they want to serve the community. Matter of fact, about two weeks ago, the last snowstorm that we had, I actually went to Passaic and I volunteered my time for the day, reading or helping six- and seven-year-olds build their social skills through reading. So, very worthwhile activity. When I'm here tonight, I'm the money man, so I'm actually here on a donation purposes. We're actually donating to various subgroups within Parsippany, the Parsippany PBA Association, Police Athletic League, the Public Library, the Fire Association, and the Volunteer Ambulance Squad. Each will receive $2,000 from the ADP Foundation. Total $10,000. So, I'll present these to the mayor.
Thank you.
Last year, they called me the money man.
That's a good nickname to have.
Very good. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Town Council?
Council President, I have a statement I'd like to read into the record, if I may.
Go ahead.
At our last Township Council meeting, there was a resolution to support the Governor's Executive Order Number Six. The backup data for this resolution was not available to Councilwoman Graniani or I over the Internet. The packet that we received just prior to the meeting contained the backup data, but we had no time to review it. About 40 people from out of town were here at the meeting and were familiar with the Executive Order Number Six on our agenda, but Mrs. Graniani and I were not. When Mrs. Graniani made a motion to table the resolution so that we could catch up, her motion was defeated and the resolution passed. The resolution supports the Governor's Executive Order and volunteers Parsippany Township to host distribution centers. The next day, when I was reviewing the contents of the Governor's Executive Order packet, I found an email from Mr. Lot, addressed to Michael Soriano, Matt Clarkin, Janice McCarthy, Emily Peterson, and Diane Hickey regarding a medical marijuana meeting. Both Mrs. Graniani and I were not aware of any such meeting. Although I am not opposed to medical marijuana distribution centers, I had many questions and concerns. The Executive Order includes, but not limited to, and I'll read you some bullet points, approving additional qualifying conditions for obtaining a medical cannabis recommendation, expansion in the number of qualifying doctors permitted to issue recommendations for patients, permitting current license holders to add satellite locations, developing a process for expedited issuance of new licenses, permitting new applicants for licenses to participate in only one aspect of a vertical chain, i.e. solely cultivation and harvesting, manufacturing and processing, and/or dispensing. Currently, all license holders are vertically integrated, meaning they control every aspect of the chain, permitting the manufacture, processing, and sale of edible cannabis products, and the last bullet permitting new licensed applicants to operate on either a nonprofit or for-profit basis. Now, edible cannabis, if that's laying around, children might think it's candy. They're going to be coming in all different forms, brownies, cookies, gummies, and they will be made to look attractive, and they might be misconstrued as candy by young people if they're left out. The potential negative aspects of the Executive Order are staggering. Parsippany Township is a suburban community with 14 public schools, several private schools and daycare centers, and 18 parks where our children play. We are a diverse community with many houses of worship. Residential areas are abundant throughout our township. We have been ranked as one of the best places to live, one of the safest places to live, and recently received an A-plus rating. I like to think that I have been a part of the collective wisdom over the past 40 years that has helped to accomplish this. I am concerned that even though the distribution centers will initially be dispensing medical marijuana, if the governor successfully legalizes recreational marijuana, the character of these distribution centers and those who are attracted to them will completely change. We do not need or want marijuana distribution centers in our township. There is no good location for them. And that's my statement.
I do, I have a message from the Public Library. All of these programs will be held at the main library. Global Youth Service Day, a community service event planned, promoted, and led by youth volunteers, will be held Saturday, April 21st. Children in grades K to 7 can drop in anytime between 10:00 a.m. and 12:00 noon to complete special Earth Day projects. On Sunday, April 22nd, at 2:00 p.m., the library will present "It's a Beautiful Day in the Library." Former Parsippany resident Joanne Young, whose Sedgefield neighbors are very excited about her return to Parsippany, will discuss what it was like to produce and direct the PBS documentary "It's You I Like" about Mr. Rogers and how she identified celebrities such as Michael Keaton, Sarah Silverman, Whoopi Goldberg, who were all admirers of Mr. Rogers. Ms. Young also plans to remind us about what made Mr. Rogers so special. Our residents seem to love this Sunday programming, so we are hoping for a great turnout. The Met Museum Four Ways, our Live Well, Age Smart lecture series, will begin Friday, April 27th, at 2:00 p.m. and continue through May 18th. The speaker is Dr. Michael Norris, Metropolitan Museum Art Educator. And on Thursday, April 26th, from 7:00 to 8:30, the library will celebrate Money Smart Week with a presentation by financial advisor Gerard Rahoe. Mr. Rahoe will be discussing investing concepts and strategies to build worth during retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
Okay. I received an email from Mr. Homiak on 4/11/18, myself and Mr. DiPiero. It was in regard to solid waste, convenience, consumption, crisis, quote, "over-engineered products, plastic packaging, enemy of earth." The bill is sponsored by Valerie Hunter, Democratic Deputy Speaker of the House, and Mr. Homiak asked me to please share this with the Parsippany officials. I have copies of the letter that he wrote, and if anyone is interested on the council, I have copies. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I do. The Historic Preservation Advisory Committee is working with the Township Grant Writers on an application to the New Jersey Historic Trust for Visitor Assessment and Management Plans for the Parsippany Museum, and that's the Bowlsby, and Mary, you can correct me on this if I'm wrong, I say it improperly, DeGalecki?
Bowlsby DeGalecki.
DeGalecki?
Yeah.
Okay. The Parsipony Museum, Bowlsby DeGalecki House, and the Smith Baldwin House. The assessments will help the township manage specific uses of each of the buildings as well as highlight and maintain their historic features.
Also, I would just like to add that the Finance Committee, we had our initial meeting yesterday, and we went over some preliminary things with the Business Administrator and the mayor and the CFO. Those notes from that meeting should be made available to the rest of the council members shortly, I would believe.
Yeah, you should have, you did receive them, Anne, not Anne Gany, but, I mean, Anne Cucci didn't release them, Anne Gany, but we both read them. You should have gotten them. If you didn't, we'll send them out to everybody then.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I want to, I have a comment on some of it, so if you would...
Okay, so, yeah, before we send it out there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I wasn't sure you received it.
Yeah.
Yeah, get us the comments back, and then we'll send them out after we hear from you.
Okay. Thank you. Township Attorney?
I have nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Business Administrator?
As you see, my partner in crime, who you just sit next to me, is here. He might be going to talk about one other topic, but I'll leave that for you, but you'll, if it's okay, Council President, it can dovetail the report.
Sure.
What I would like to talk to as our joint thing is, at the last council meeting, I made a commitment that we would first meet, Anne and I would first meet with the mayor and his staff to go over the budget and how tight it was and how extremely important it was for us to take a look at all aspects of what makes up both the appropriation side as well as the revenue side, in addition to the capital concerns that we have. That being said, the next thing on the agenda was that we said we would meet with the Finance Committee, which we did. There was a little bit of a hiccup, so that's why we met yesterday, but at that meeting, we spent a good couple of hours going over, again, many different types of techniques in which you can work on a budget that you know is not a one-year budget, and I'm not talking capital, I'm talking about something to do with the fact that the way the budget flows, it's really, for the most part, a three-year process, a three-year thing that we have to deal with so that we don't take care of in one year, be very low, so that in the next year we have to be high, and then it just doesn't serve the public nor the people that are, the council and the mayor.
The bond companies don't like that either.
They don't, yeah. They don't like Moody's and S&amp;P for the last, I was, ever since my career started, I was always with the capital financing, and that was one of the big avenues that they looked at, but definitely, they never liked the ups and downs. They would rather it be smooth and even if goes a little bit in an upward motion. That being said, I think Anne and I want to just extend to the mayor and council that the books that we talk about, the mayor's budget, we were able to finalize something with, you know, it does have an increase in it based on the fact that last year's budget was a zero budget. It didn't really bode well and didn't really, it hurt us quite a bit going into this year. That being said, I think also we make a commitment that the books that we talk about that will have all the parts to it, the operating budget, the story of what the department heads are looking to do to maintain as well as to improve the services and conditions of life in Parsippany, they will be distributed sometime between, say, the 26th, 27th, that time period. We're just finalizing now, making sure, because of all the changes we had to make and all the things we had to move. As you know, when you're dealing with something that has $73 million, and that's just the current budget, we're not talking about the utilities, water, sewer, and golf, so that, you know, we're juggling a good couple of numbers. Anne and I have also, and those that have been on the council or those who have come out to council meetings know that when we do the budget, there's my standard bearer, when we do the budget, as he knows, Al knows that also, that, you know, he came to the last one, he was the last man standing, and he does know how we go through the process. If I might, I would like to, as I'm speaking to you and Anne and I and the mayor have talked about this, when you get the books you'll be looking through, you'll notice that as far as certain departments, it's on very steady, they're barely going up anything. To make the time to serve us all well and to comprehend what's contained in here in the budget, we're asking that, we ask for your indulgence on giving us a couple of days very early in May, and at those meetings, basically, I'm making a very strong suggestion, unless I hear differently, certainly, the police department will be out, emergency services will be out, the construction, somewhat of the construction aspect will be out, the DPW will be out, which serves engineering as well as a lot of the capital projects. Those are the major things that you want to interact and really get into the, what's comprised there and what we're doing to move forward. So, that being said, if anybody has anything particular prior to those meetings set up, if, as you look through the book, and if you have any questions, maybe we can just answer those questions on a smaller budget, say, you know, the animal control, which is incorporated in the police anyway, or, you know, the community, you know, services and what the contract is, because, you know, we don't have our own health officer. Anne, do you want to add anything to that? Did I cover all the aspects of how we want to proceed? And we'll get some dates, we'll work with Leslie and Colette on those dates, okay?
Thank you. If I may, I was just handed a note by the mayor. If I may ask everybody to just stand for a moment of silence, former First Lady Barbara Bush just passed away.
If I might, and again, this is an indulgence on my part, in 1986, when I came to Denville, somebody in the, used to come to a meeting, and a gentleman, and he thought I was doing a good job, and he sent a letter to Barbara Bush, and she wrote me a letter back and said, "Keep up the good work, the people on the municipal level." So, I mean, I get a little choked up because that was in 1986, and I have that signed, and you could tell it was really her signature, and it wasn't one of those one-of-made-of-things, and she just said, and I have it framed, and she said, "Keep up the good work." It's the people that are on this level that get to have to see you all the time, no, I mean, get to be with the public. So, it kind of made me strong to get through it, particularly Mary. But I digress, and I, Anne, are you going to speak to, on the golf?
I can't.
No, I mean, I wasn't sure what you want. Can you indulge, Council President, that I give my, the rest of my time, which probably I'm over, the rest of my time to the Senator from Finance?
The rest of your time is right seven. Yes, sure.
I'm going to go to Mike. Anne, do you want this one? I'll put it...
No, I'm good. No.
I like this one.
Just kind of like them.
I'm going to speak to two things. We have a resolution on here. Also, I wanted to talk about a small salary ordinance. When you see salary ordinance, you think it's going to be huge, but what happened was we were audited by the IRS, and they came in and looked at the payroll, and they decided that a number of our part-time people who are, come in, like the prosecutor and the defender, public defender, are really employees. So, in order for that to happen, we had to do an ordinance to put them on to be able to be paid as part-time employees. So, that's what you're going to say here. Okay, I just want to explain that.
I think one of the things in addition to that is the reason is that because they're not like an LLC, they're not, they're individuals as a part.
Yeah. In other words, if they were a part of a firm, a big firm, more than three, we would be able to pay the firm, but we awarded the resolution to individuals. So, that meant I have to pay an individual and give them normally a $10.99, but now we can't do that. So, that's okay. This is what the ordinance is for, and we will pay them as employees monthly, like everybody else, and that goes for public defender, health educator, and you'll get a much bigger salary ordinance when we do the budget.
Okay.
I'll just speak briefly about the Knoll bid. As you all know, we decided to go back out and be more detailed, thanks to Emily, about the pro shop and the operations of the Knoll. We had looked into getting a much broader scope of work there versus just a pro that would come in and give golf lessons and run an operation for themselves, more for the township to expand it to a much broader group of people such as women, children, families, let's open it up because it is a destination, it is not private. In order to do that, we decided to do a much bigger scope of work, and thank you to Diane. Also, we had a team, we met many times, wrote up a pretty thorough scope of work. We ended up with two bidders, and we had a deciding team, and we interviewed them. They were very close, they're very similar, they both do the same kind of work, that's what they do, they come in and they run it for us. But there were certain factors that we decided there was a weighted average, we did the weighted averages, and based on our interview, this is what you're going to vote on today. We're really excited about it. I think it's just the future, and I thank everybody for, if you have any questions we can ask, thank you, Kevin, back there.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was on, he was on our team, and we painstakingly, with Diane, right? She's a real golfer now. Those who weren't golfers aren't going to be now, but thank you for that. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Just to clarify, thank you, Anne. We're not outsourcing the Knoll Country Club, because I heard someone make that comment.
No. This is just for the pro shop and the operations, and the bringing in the professionals to do lessons, to advertise, to market our facility. It's interesting, the way that they study the market is so much more thorough than any of us ever could do. They know the business. They know... thing, but when it comes to marketing, this isn't our business, and that's what they're coming in to do, so I'm really excited, and also, from a CFO point of view, they're coming in with new programs, and financial, I like the way they're going to run the finance part, so, yeah.
And, one more question, that came from some of the members that know that we're moving in this direction, and that was, are we going to see the same pro, or are we going to have someone that we get to know, and get to know us?
Yes.
Or is Kemper going to change pros that come different weeks?
No, there's going to be the main pro, there's actually, I'll give it to you, there's a whole organizational chart, so there'll be the main pro, and then depending if we want a certain program, for example, a school for the kids, they'll bring in the professionals to do that, and then they'll go on their way, so there's going to be a hierarchy of pros there, it will be all professionals running it, yeah, but there will be someone you get to know.
That's what they're looking for.
That's important, well, it's important in the business, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Thank you.
Have them contact us, you know, anybody, to let us know, we're going to have a, we'll have a meeting with them, we'll ask Kemper to come in and speak to the golf committee, and if you'd like to meet them, they'd be happy to come out and speak to you, okay.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
And I think with regard to any of the people, there is, either through attrition, or through Kemper, looking at some of the people that are working there, they may also be interested in working for them.
Yeah, I mean, what they do is, they come in, they, our people continue to work for us, but they do have a very interesting employment process, if they decide they would rather work for Kemper, they look for people who are here to work for them, but right now, that's not going to happen, I mean, that could happen later on down the road, but one thing at a time, and we're real excited, and hopefully, after tonight, if we award, they could start tomorrow, maybe, not quite, Diane, I know, we don't have the contract, but that's what we're looking forward to.
So, in answer to the question too, though, or that I wanted to raise, so it's clear, we're not displacing anyone.
No, that's the point, no.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, township clerk?
Nothing.
Any other committee reports? Okay, bids taken, April 5th, 2018, improvements to Old Bloomfield Road, April 12th, 2018, supply of bioxide for the wastewater treatment plant, bids to be taken, April 19th, 2018, 2018 road resurfacing curb and sidewalk program, April 24th, Phase 1 rehabilitation of the Smith Baldwin House, April 25th, road reconstruction project, Lake Precipiny, April 26th, road reconstruction project, Mount Taber, and May 3rd, road reconstruction plan, Knoll Road, Vale Road to Buckingham Road. Quotations, proposals, qualifications, April 3rd, 2018, request for proposals for clubhouse management and operation services at the Knoll Country Club, April 25th, 2018, fireworks display services. Ms. Peterson?
Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the town council wishes to discuss litigation, Karifi matter, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Sorry, I'll get it.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Cragg Nanny?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
I'll recuse myself.
Motion to reconvene into open session?
Second.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Cragg Nanny?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion, open up the public hearing.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Cragg Nanny?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Please, when you come forward, state your name and address, and sign in, you'll be given five minutes.
that's, this woman keeps alive, God bless her soul, Assemblywoman Valerie Van Terry Huddle, from the 37th District, and I'm going to leave a copy here, and the basic thing is to go back to the old, old way of deposits, the plastic crisis is planetary, it's, we are destroying our world, the beauty of our world, the common good is actually going away, and it's all because of some convenient, over-engineered product that you can, it takes you a few minutes to consume, and you throw it on the ground, and it lasts forever. We're not enforcing our ordinances, the crisis is, of all the plastic produced, 70% winds up in landfills, despite the recycle. Now, my years of being, working as a volunteer in the National Park Service, and here in town and everything, I could tell you, another, probably 20%, is in the litter stream, so, we're actually making more plastic now, under the corporate-dominated forces that are controlling this country, when we should be making less. I'm just going to read you one short paragraph here, because it's got a lot of power in it, every redeemed empty beverage container shall be the property of the retailer or redemption center, accepting the empty beverage container for redemption. Now, imagine our litter containers up here in the store, people go in the store, they have a Coke, they have a bottle of water, what do they do, if they don't throw it in the street, they throw it in our municipal containers, they pass it off to us, if the retailer, or the store owner, had to retrieve his own materials, think of the money that we would save, and the labor we would save, not being slaves to somebody's business, who won't do it for themselves, they won't even clean their own sidewalks, it's out of control. I'm going to leave the copy, a copy here, of the legislation, and in the postal service, the maintenance used to have what's called an MS-47, and what it was, was a custodial, you figure out what area you're going to do, and what either has to be cleaned, or how many hours it would take, we need something like that in our ordinances, to expect people, that it shouldn't take you this long to clean your property, if you don't clean your property, you know, maybe we should enforce the ordinances, based on some, I don't know, more advanced science, not just words, I don't know if I'm making any sense. Last, I just want to make one thing, because I find it humorous, Councilman DePiero, he says, oh, the alcohol goes in your body, and it's out of your body in seven hours, and you're just like new, well, when it goes out of your body, Mr. DePiero, where do you think it goes? It goes in the outside world, aluminum glass, that's where it all is, the alcohol consumption is part of this big problem that we're having now, so it just, it goes out of your body, but it goes into the world, the body that, the host of all life, so it doesn't, it doesn't leave your body, and it doesn't go away, so it's, you know, and what are all these empty buildings around here, eh, if somebody wants to sell some medical marijuana, what's the big deal? But I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave the Assembly Bill 1710, and Valerie Van Terry Huddle, God bless her soul, she won't surrender, and hopefully, maybe someday, the world will change for the better, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nick, I gave the copy to each of the council people, but I gave the copy that you sent me with her telephone number, and her addresses, and so forth.
All right.
That's the bill itself?
Yes.
My name is Bob Venedzi, I live at 102 Brook Lawn Drive, there's an ordinance that I'm interested in later on in the agenda, but before we get to that, I need, I'd like to get a little more information, so I can make an intelligent comment later on, and my question's, it's on ordinance 201804, the $4 million bond issue for the replacement of generators, I want to know, is that $4 million being issued within the sewer budget, or the general budget?
Sewer.
Sewer. Did the sewer utility run a surplus amount this year, if so, how much, and what is the cumulative sewer surplus that we have, including this year's surplus? And then, last question, this year, are there any monies from the sewer surplus being transferred to the proposed general budget, as it was last year, and if so, how much? Those are my questions.
Do you want me to answer them now? I mean, before they?
Do you have anything else? No. No? Depending on what I get here, I may come up when the, you know, when the ordinance comes up. Right, okay. But that's it, for right now.
Ann, do you want to address it, because we just worked on those numbers, or, let me just make a broad statement while Ann's gathering her thoughts, the sewer surplus, or as we like to call it, the true description is fund balance, runs somewhere between, gets regenerated, somewhere between $9 million and $11 million. What we also note is that, after review by auditors, and more than one, said that, based on the size of our plant, that a healthy surplus that should be maintained at all times is at the, a minimum of $5 million, so we are in excess of, somewhere between $4, $5 million. Pat Patacia, a person who comes to the meetings, often, always had asked that question, I'm here for three years, going on four years, and I made the commitment to her, I don't make promises, I make commitments, because commitments are kept, and I made her the commitment, as a finance person, and also a certified finance officer, that there are no guarantees in life, but that we would regenerate, which we have over the last years. The only reason why it's less than the 11 to 10, 10 to 11 million dollars, is we're doing what you might be looking for, pay as you go, so we spent, say, $2 million on a project, where we did not go out to bond. Another thing that we can get you chapter and verse in more detail is, we have canceled over, between eight, eight to 12 million dollars in sewer debt service authorization to spend, so we did cancel it. Unfortunately, we thought an old ordinance that was on the books would cover these, the generators, because we are strict financial, and we take it as a sacred trust, we wanted to make sure that the language fit, it did not, so we canceled that $4 million, and then we created this new $4 million, so it really is a war, so that's the answer to that, and yes, we are using, as we have done in the past, some of the utility money for the balancing of the budget.
Can you tell me about how much that is?
In the sewer, two?
Sorry?
The sewer, are we using two?
Yeah, we haven't, it's contemplating.
Yeah, around two.
Two million? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mary Przycki, Marcela Road, in Precipiny, just a really quick, I wasn't at the last council meeting on, with this approval of Murphy's marijuana, medical marijuana, and I just have a concern, and that would be, if it came to Precipiny, what would be the consumer protections in these distribution, what do they call them, centers, or whatever, I forgot what they call them, because if you have done some homework on marijuana, even the industry concedes that pesticides and heavy metals have been detected in medical marijuana, and the state of Colorado, Washington, and I believe Oregon, have, in their infancy, tried to test for this, and to eliminate it, and I sure would not want to see medical marijuana having residuals of pesticides in it, because you're dealing with sick people. I mean, there is no such thing as organically grown marijuana, so when it does come, and if it did come to Precipiny, who would regulate this? Does the state, I'd like to ask a question, does the state have regulations in place for quality control of marijuana?
Mine?
This is not my time, it's hers, she's answering the question.
No, but I'll, we're not.
My understanding is that they are licensed by the state, and that there is some provision in EO 6, and the act itself, to provide for testing of the marijuana.
Has it started already, though, or when will it start?
I'll answer all the questions at the end.
Oh, okay.
Sure, I apologize, thank you, Council President.
All right, just, how far has it started, and who's lined up to do the testing, is it going to be an integrated program with the state and private testing facilities or not, and then, when it does come across the counter, I mean, those licensing people who are selling it, who is going to, who is going to inspect them, would it be the town health officer, like they do when they go down to, say, a ShopRite, or something like that, because controls, don't forget, are not federally mandated, because it's an illegal drug, and it has to be state by state, so in this past, what, three and a half months that this governor took over, I should like to know, when it took other states quite a long time to establish these policies, and that's my concern, consumer protection for the people of Precipiny, and for the state of New Jersey, but since specifically, it might be coming to our town, who would regulate it, and then the expense lies on us, so I think that needs to be considered, all right, that's it, because I really do have some questions about this town, too. First, the other one is, I'm watching the beautiful Waterview development going up, and I was wondering where the sidewalks were going to go, because those walls are like sitting right on Route 46, and they forced the drugstore and Paul Miller to put in sidewalks, and where are those, were they on the plans, I sure would like somebody on the planning board to check that out, to make sure, since safety is supposed to be a concern here, sidewalk safety on Route 46, I think, is prevalent, so that should be taken into consideration. And then, the other question I have, I don't know how you would handle this, but I live in Lake Precipiny, and we do have our problems, and one of them is, is walking on Lakeshore Drive, and I sure would like to, like the town to designate, designate what is the town right-of-way on the shoreline area of Lake Precipiny, because then people should be able to walk on it safely, and not walk in a road, and a poor guy who got killed, so if that could be investigated, that would be very nice, so that when people do walk on the grounds that are on the lakeside, they're not getting thrown off, because they're on township right-of-way, okay, that's it.
That last one I'll take, for administration, we'll take that one, not to answer it now, but to...
I've spoken to Newark, it's a caucus, and I'm going to do Wayne tomorrow night. But primarily, the reason why I'm here, over 90 million Americans, one out of every three suffer from some respiratory ailment, and yet, when they travel, there are no accommodations or mandated or set aside to service them. Many people fear traveling because living temporarily in an unfamiliar, untested environment could set off a deadly unexpected allergic attack. Well, this is part of the press release, but anyway, new legislation, new proactive health legislation is currently pending in Newark, Secaucus, Wayne, and hopefully Parsipany, which will allow residents and travelers to New Jersey to have a choice between smoking, non-smoking, or respiratory-friendly hotel rooms. A respiratory-friendly room is any carpeted area where allergens are extracted and weighed and verified to possess less than three grams of detectable allergens. So basically, we're asking for an amendment to your hotel ordinance from 19, I think it's from 1986, last time it's been looked at. We're basically asking each hotel to turn over three, three rooms to the city, which we go in monthly and inspect for people, you know, and we'll have a certificate sitting on the nightstand so people can know that the room has been inspected. And I left some copies of the reports. Primarily what we do is we go into the room and we extract the allergens out the carpet and, you know, we weigh them. So, so basically, when all these, when they come up blank, each of these filters are a gram, so the machine can detect, these come up blank is basically under three grams of allergens. That's basically how the baseline will come. So primarily, you know, I've been doing hotels in the various cities of the four cities. So at this stage, primarily, I wanted to leave this so you can look over it. And I wanted to leave a copy, guess, with the town clerk, if she could just like timestamp it, and I'll go to the hotels and...
If you could leave all of that paperwork, if you could give that to the clerk for us, this way we can all get copies of that.
And I guess if she would like, I'll come back tomorrow when she was stamping up, you know, go back to the hotels and I'll submit the reports to the health official, I'll come back and...
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, do your best, but I don't know if you're going to deliver like Nick can deliver.
Ken Dalski, Winfield Drive. So what Nick was, what Nick wanted to say, since I'm up here, I'll have a few other things to say, but that you look at the bottle bill resolution and vote to pass it in Parsipany. So that's the request, that Parsipany be, become proactive on this resolution. I'm just going to also make a comment about the medical marijuana and the problem with testing for, you know, contamination. I don't know anything, I've never read anything about this, so I cannot talk from a standpoint of knowledge. However, I don't know of a single situation in which a town has been asked to test samples of food for, you know, purity, for contamination, for contamination with pesticides or anything like that, and had to bear the cost of doing it. So I would suspect that the state is going to have to bear the costs of, of doing that in, in general. And if we're concerned about contamination and pesticides and heavy metals and things, I guarantee that every single one of us is ingesting plenty of that already from all the fruits and vegetables and processed foods that we eat. And any amount of that on marijuana would be a tiny fraction of what everybody is already ingesting. So I'm not saying I'm in favor of it by any means, and everything we eat should be pesticide-free and contaminant-free and heavy metal-free, but, you know, let's keep it in perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, see no one else come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Mr. DePiero?
Who made the motion?
Ms. McCarthy made the motion.
Oh, sorry, second.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Cragnanny?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Mr. DePiero?
Okay, ordinance number 2018:07. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2017:05, entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing White Collar Salary Ranges for the Township of Parsipany Troy Hills." Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Parsipany Troy Hills, held on April 17, 2018, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage, at a meeting to be held on May 1, 2018, at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as a matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second, Gagnani.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Cragnanny?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Second reading in public hearing?
Ordinance number 2018:03, an ordinance to make conforming technical corrections to Chapter 329-14 sewer connection fees and Chapter 445-78 water connection fees and capacity charges of the code of the Township of Parsipany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey. The notice for this ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsipany Troy Hills, on March 26, 2018. This ordinance was introduced at the March 20, 2018, regular meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2018:03, be heard in its second and final reading by title only. Motion.
Second.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Cragnanny?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Nicholas Homiak from Lake Hiawatha again. Could you please make exactly clear what has taken place here? It says 300, I don't know why the larger number comes first, and then three, 135 gallons per day, and then it goes to 300 to 180. So theoretically, they're increasing their water allotment, and who, who beyond the municipality has been involved with this and how is it justified?
Is that all your questions? Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, if you want to answer.
Come to this side this time. Okay, what happened was, they had the wrong gallons per day calculation.